Today is October 18th, regular council meeting. All the persons are present with Mr. Zachar appearing by Zoom. And if he drops off within like an hour or so, it's been pre-planned. So we have him for then. First item on a business is is the pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Please stand. Okay, item four is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on September 20th. What are your wishes? A motion by Veneman. Seconded by Bemke. Any corrections, comments? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. And Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried seven a's and one nay.
Okay, you want it.
So you want to me-
You wanted aye? I can change it. Yes. And is that appropriate to do it now? Okay. Alder Person Pollock also wanted to make it clear that there were two items last week that he voted nay on, that he meant to vote aye, but the, his mouse wasn't working. So, we will make those corrections in the minutes.
Thank you.
It didn't change the vote at all, but we're just making those corrections because his intention was to vote aye.
Next item is consider the appointment of a regular member to the Water and Light Commission to replace Tom Nowak for a term expiring on October 1st, 2026. See attachment two. I believe Mr. Harper stated that he was not able to attend tonight. But he was here last time.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Harper.
Do we? Make a nomination?
I'll nominate John.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Oh, Mr. Delaney?
Is there anybody in the audience that had?
They're on Waste Water Commission.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Unless they have a desire to be on Water and Light also, but. No, they're not jumping to attention too quickly. Yep. Alright, so we have a nomination for Mr. Harper. Is there a motion for unanimous consent to approve Mr. Harper as Water and Light Commissioner? We have a motion by Evanson. And a second by Rayom. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballot. Uh, Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. That went a little smoother this month. Item seven is consider for approval Mayor Blazer's appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Oh, I'm sorry, I crossed out the wrong one. Consider an appointment for one regular member and one city employee member for the Ethics Board for a term expiring November 25th, 2000, November 1st, 2025. We'll take them one at a time. We can take the regular member first. And I believe we have we have two. Mr. Teaslink, who has been on the Ethics Board, and I think Mr. Gilbert, who has a desire. So, we have a nomination for Mr. Teaslink. Mr. Rayom did.
Sorry, can I ask a question?
You sure can.
So, who, so there's one city member?
Correct.
And one regular member?
Correct.
And who is the regular member nominees?
So, Mr. Teaslink and Philip Gilbert.
Thank you, Philip Gilbert, okay, I'm sorry, thank you, sorry.
You're welcome. Any other nominations? So seeing none, does anyone want to make a motion for unanimous consent? Oh, I'm sorry, no, that. That's, I think, that's not. Alright. Anybody wish to make a motion for unanimous consent? For Mr. Teaslink, his regular appointment to the Ethics Board. We have a motion by Mr. Rayom, seconded by Mr. Bemke. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried seven a's and one abstention? He probably wanted to. Yeah. So while we're on to the employee appointment. Eric Daven is the, has been the employee representative. He is teaching tonight at Citizens Academy. So, he wanted me to let you know that, otherwise he would have been here, but they're at Midstate tonight. He was not able to get over here. And that, we don't have any other, unless there's some department heads here you want to volunteer, but.
I'll nominate Eric Daven.
Thank you, we have a nomination by Mr. Austin for Eric Daven.
A second?
Uh, so you want to hit your button for your motion? There we go. And then Mr. Zachar, if you can hit a second for him? Motion to pre-anonymous consent. Alright, any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion carried seven a's with one abstention. Onto item number seven, consider for approval Mayor Blazer's appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. These are reappointments. Alright. We have a motion by Evanson. And a second by Mr. Delaney. Any further discussion, comments? That's her.
I didn't second it, I just requested the speech.
Oh, you did.
Say, um.
So you can go.
Was this, it's a reappointment, was, is it one position part of the council for this?
No, they're all my appointments.
Okay, so they're both citizen appointment?
Yep.
Alright, thanks.
Are you interested in being on it? Yeah, you can't, that's true, you can't do both. That's why Mr. Pollock had to resign. Alright, we have a second by Austin. Any further questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. We're on to number eight, consider for adoption the action of the Plan Commission at its meeting held on October 3rd. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on October 3rd in the council chambers, as well as via audio conferencing. Member, a list of members present are on file in the Community Development Department. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. Item one was the approval of the report from September 8th. There was a motion by Blazer to approve the report from September 8th, and a second by Austin. That motion carried seven zero. Item two was a request from, or item two was Vandoval and Associates' update on the Wisconsin Rapids Recovery and Redevelopment Plan. Director Kearns provided an update on the plan. No action was taken. Item three was a request by Bruce P. Linsmire for extraterritorial CSM for the creation of one lot within the town of Rudolph. Mr. Kearns provided a summary of the request. There was a motion by Austin to approve the request. A second by Daven, that motion carried seven zero. Item four was a request from Ginsel Insurance for site plan review and architectural review for a commercial building addition at 540 Pepper Avenue. Associate Planner Edmondson provided a synopsis of the request. Commissioner Austin questioned the amount of site work being done, to which Mrs. Edmondson replied, there was a motion by Austin to approve the request at 540 Pepper Avenue for a commercial building addition, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. There were a total of eight. That request was seconded by Daven, that motion carried seven zero. Item five was a request by Teresa Cashman for site plan review to perform site improvements at 3820 8th Street South. Director Kearns noted a correction in the packet and provided, provided a summary of the request, recommending approval with the outlined conditions in the staff report. Commissioner Fith made some comments and observations regarding previous requests from the applicant, and the commission continued to talk about some of those requests, or some of those items. Eventually, motion Blazer, there was a motion by Blazer to approve the request, including the conditions outlined on page one of the staff report. That was seconded by Daven, that motion carried seven zero. Commissioner Kubis, Kubisak left the meeting thereafter. Item six was a request by Teresa Cashman for a public hearing in action to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance specifically related to architectural standards and screening of trash enclosures in commercial districts. Director Kearns provided a summary of the report, or of the request. Public hearing opened at 4:34 PM. Speaking in favor was Jim Lucas. Speaking against, none. Public hearing closed at 4:37 PM. Eric Daven inquired about the idea of obtaining a variance versus a code amendment, to which Director Kearns responded. Commissioner Fith commented about the implications of changing the code, to which Director Kearns responded. A discussion ensued as to whether exceptions to the standard should be made. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request presented by staff, specifically regarding the architectural standards for stra, trash enclosures, which included changing Planning Commission approval instead of Zoning Administrator approval and removing Standard Four. That motion failed due to a lack of a second. There was then a motion by Austin to approve the request, changing the wording in Standard 13 from, or to Plan Commission from Zoning Administrator, in retaining all of the four standards identified. That was seconded by Blazer, that motion carried four two, with Goodrow and Fith voting against. Item seven was adjournment. A motion by Daven to adjourn, seconded by Tao, that motion carried six zero. Meeting adjourned at 5:03 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veneman, did you want to hold one out, or? Or do you just want to ask a question, probably?
Sure, thanks. So we, we actually are meeting with them the first week in November to go over a rough draft internally. And then thereafter, my hope is to get that rough draft before the Plan Commission and ultimately council for approval at some point. I think it depends on what state of that rough draft it's in, and if staff deem several changes necessary. The update that I provided at Plan Commission was that the surveys that we had administered through Vandoval, the online surveys were being wrapped up, and that again, the final draft was being produced for the, the redevelopment plan. It was a pretty brief, brief update.
What has been the progress for the last few months from them? And, and I didn't really understand how the consultant is being connected with the new owners. What, did that mean they haven't talked to them yet? This is the first time, or?
So, they've primarily wrapped up the survey. They had a, I think about a month and a half, two months ago, they held a symposium on the paper industry, in which I think about 100 individuals regionally attended and across the state, and they brought guest speakers in from different industries. A lot of what they've been doing most recently is basically consolidating all the data they've gathered in the two different aspects of the plan, one being the recovery portion of the plan, and the other being the redevelopment portion of the plan, the recovery relating to the industry, the economics surrounding, you know, how the community was affected. And then the redevelopment portion being the goals and objectives, the maps, the, you know, the, the, the planning revolved around the site and all of its parameters. And, and so that's kind of been the, the holdup to this point, is they haven't had that rough draft ready for our review yet. But again, we're expecting it hopefully in the next two weeks here.
Is everything they've done so far within this realm of what we have paid them? Or are we, you're looking, you're thinking, are we looking at?
Yes, yep, so everything they've done has been within the, the $180,000 total project cost. They actually, if you can remember, a, a good chunk, about $60,000 worth is for implementation. So after the plans adopted by council, the ultimate goal is to keep the consultant on board so that they can start implementing some of the goals and objectives of the, the plan. And I didn't answer the original question in regards to connecting with Billaroo. We've since made the connection ourselves internally as staff. We were able to talk with a corporate individual, and we've passed that contact on to Vandoval as well to make some of those, or to ask some of those questions that they had to incorporate within the plan. Thank you.
Ms. Evanson?
Thank you. I just, couple of questions regarding number five, or number five and six. When I watched the meeting, I was kind of concerned as well with some of the responses at that meeting regarding the trash enclosure that we're changing. You know, there was other businesses that had to comply, and they didn't, and so now we're changing the code. I just hope as a city that, you know, we kind of stay, I mean, yes, there's going to be little exceptions here and there, but I don't like the idea of, again, changing, changing things to specific people because it just, I think it, it doesn't look good. The other question is, as far as the earlier permit for the Cashman, in the meeting, and it indicated that some of the stipulations had not been met as yet? Have they come up to code? And I apologize, I can't remember exactly what, I just remember when I was watching that, there were a few things that Susan had mentioned that weren't complied with, and that were giving them more permits. Could you further on that? Thank you.
Yeah, so I think at the time of the meeting, we had not yet issued the building permit for the accessory structure. As part of the previous approval, they were required to submit an updated rendering showing that they were going to incorporate some aesthetic features in the accessory building. They did that right away, but one of the things we were waiting on is a value. Anytime we issue a building permit, we need a value. Sometimes that dictates the, the permit fee, and they had not provided us that value. So, we've since got that, we've issued it. We've not yet done a final inspection on it to make sure all of the requirements are, have been met on that, on that accessory structure. But the other thing, obviously, is their, their refuse storage did not meet the standard. And so, they had a few options. They could pursue a zoning variance, or they could pursue an ordinance amendment. They chose to pursue the ordinance amendment, so the applicant has made the request, not necessarily staff in this instance.
And what was the base? I mean, I remember there was discussion that it was, someone had mentioned that they thought it had to be concrete, but I thought then you had said that technically, it, it didn't say that, just that it had to be a permanent base?
Right. So it, the accessory structure doesn't necessarily have to be on asphalt or, or concrete. It just has to be on, you know, I guess, a, a foundation of sorts. You know, so that it's not on grass that, you know, is going to grow weeds up and aesthetically isn't going to be that appealing. And I think they've, they've put a gravel base down, which would suffice to meet that requirement.
And so, in, in short, you're, in getting back to, so the change to the code is not a recommendation necessarily on your part? It is, it is the applicant that wants to change the code? Is that correct?
So the applicant made the request. We had some concerns about their initial request, and so we, we basically provided a, kind of a hybrid approach, and said if, if something's to be approved, we would want to see additional standards approved if it is approved. So it's not necessarily a recommendation on our part to amend the ordinance, but more so if Plan Commission or Council did want to provide an amendment or approve an amendment, that we would recommend a hybrid approach rather than the specific requirements that they had requested. There were several conditions that we're recommending as part of the, I guess, the approval at Plan Commission versus what they had recommended, which I don't feel as though was appropriate as an ordinance amendment for trash and refuse.
And everybody else has complied? I mean, with that.
Yeah, so up, up to this point, you know, a lot of other projects similarly on 8th Street, Starbucks, Caribou, Revision Eye Care, they all have, I believe, wooden enclosures that are fully opaque that meet Standard 13 of the architectural standards.
Thank you. Again, I'm not nitpicking, I'm just, why aren't we in compliance? I mean, if everyone has to do it, why don't everybody, you know, one has to do it, why aren't?
And, 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 don't get me wrong, I, I don't disagree with you. To go on a little further details, they submitted a wooden structure. The wooden structure met the requirement. After the fact, they went out and installed a chain link structure. So we brought it to their intention that they're not in compliance, and they have to comply. And they've basically said, what, what are our options? We do not want to comply, we've invested money in the chain link fence, what else can we do? So we've said you can go to the, through the Zoning Board of Appeals and get a variance, but it's going to be a self-created variance, which is very difficult to obtain. Or you can request an amendment to the ordinance specifically relating to refuse storage screening. And that's what they've pursued at this point. So we've held off with any enforcement until there's some sort of action on the requests that they've made.
And so if we, if we would vote no on this, then they would have to change their, their, their chain link fence to comply?
They could still pursue the zoning variance, but otherwise, yes, they would have to comply with the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Do, do, does council just want to hold out this item and then vote on the balance? Does that work? Oh, okay. Reading your mind tonight. Yes, number six. I think that's what his request was going to be. So, item six of the Plan Commission report will be held out. As for the balance of the report, what are your wishes? So a motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve, I'm assuming? Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm going to vote no on this.
Oh, okay. This is the balance of the report? Not item six?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Let's, let's let it ride. Mr. Zachar, what are your wishes?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Rayom? Or speak on it?
Not entirely, I was just dumping the gun there, I guess, listening to the discussion that was going on. I had intention, I was, had intentions of holding it out and listen to the conversation that Sherry was having. I thought it was a good idea to hold it out too, and just, so I'm voting no.
And we do have an ordinance attached, so, I guess, what are your wishes then regarding this item? So a motion by Delaney to approve, seconded by Austin. Okay, is there any further discussion on this item in the ordinance? Uh, yep, go ahead.
I just had a question now that I look at this. Changing the Planning Commission versus Zoning Administrator, where is that, where is that wording changed? Changing the wording in Standard 13 to Planning Commission versus Zoning Administrator? I don't, I didn't see that in there, when I prepared the ordinance, I didn't make any changes to that, so.
So it should have, I would have presented it with that change to you, Sue. So under 13, section one of the ordinance, underneath paragraph 13, it says the Plan Commission prior that said the Zoning Administrator.
Oh, I see, the, the.
It pre, it was originally presented as the Zoning Administrator at the Plan Commission meeting. And the action, or the recommendation from Plan Commission was to change it from Zoning Administrator to Plan Commission. So any exception, if this is approved tonight, related to screening of refuse storage, would have to go to the Plan Commission for approval. Which is very similar to other exceptions within the zoning code.
Okay, so it does say Plan Commission. The, the new ordinance as presented is correct?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
It reflects the Plan Commission change.
Mr. Austin?
I'll speak to this. I don't think this decision was made to cut anyone a break. I think it was more on the lines of the materials that were used in this refuse, I feel are above the standard of wood. And I think it looks better, in my opinion. It, it's, it's probably more costly to install chain link, especially with the screening involved. So, I feel like if, if, if somebody wants to put chain link as their refuse material, that shouldn't be restricted, so.
Thank you. And that's why I seconded it at the Plan Commission, for the same reason. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carried seven a's, one nay. Moving on to item nine, which is consider for the adoption, the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Yeah, we have a second reading next one. Item A, Finance and Property Committee meeting held October 4th. Mr. Veneman?
The Finance and Property Committee met, excuse me, met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, October 4th, in the council chambers. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present. List of all, all those in attendance is available at the clerk, clerk's office. Item one, Chairman Zach, Chipper and Zachar called the meeting order at 4:05 PM. Two, consider a request from the Fire Department to approve the requisition for six firefighters. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve the request from the Fire Department for the requisition of six firefighters. Three will be applied through the grant, and if the grant is awarded, they will apply for it in three years. Motion carried, three ayes, no nays. Motion carried, three a's, no nays. Consider a request from the fire department to negotiate the upcoming upcoming contract for renewals for the village of Port Edwards and town of Saratoga. It was moved by Veneman, excuse me, seconded by Bemke to approve the request from the fire department to negotiate the upcoming contract renewals for the village of Port Edwards and the town of Saratoga. Motion carried, three a's, no nays. Consider for approval the appointment of Catherine Quillantin as successor agent for the retail Class A fermented malt malt beverages license and retail Class A intoxicating liquor licenses for Aldi Incorporated, Wisconsin D B A Aldi number eight, for the premises located at twelve eleven Eighth Street South. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Veneman to approve the appointment of Catherine Quillantin as successor agent for the retail Class A fermented beverage malt beverages and retail Class A intoxicating liquor licenses for Aldi Inc., Wisconsin D B A Aldi number eight, for the premises located at twelve eleven Eighth Street South. Motion carried, three a's, no nays. Number five, audit of the bills. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve check numbers one two, one four, two four, six, two, one, four, five, one, five. Motion carried, three a's, no nays. Item six, it was a twenty twenty-three budget discussion. The budget was discussed, no action was taken. Item seven, we set the meeting date. The next regular meeting is set for Tuesday, November first at four P M. And item eight, it was adjourned, moved by Zachar and seconded by Bemke, and the meeting adjourned at four forty-one P M. With that, I submit the report for approval.
Thank you. So a motion by Veneman? Motion by Austin, seconded by Delaney. Any discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. We're on to item B, Public Works Committee meeting held on October sixth. Uh, Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, October sixth, in the council chambers at City Hall. Ryan Austin, Sherry Evanson, Dennis Pollak, and Tom Reo were in attendance. Item one, the meeting was called to order at five P M. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity report. The reports were reviewed. Item three, review the five-year capital improvement plan. The draft five-year public works capital improvement plan is available online at the engineering department homepage at W Y Rapids dot org slash engineering. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Austin, to approve the five-year public works capital improvement plan. Motion carried three zero. Item four, review a preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for Wiley Street between Eighth Street North to Tenth Street North, proposed for construction in twenty twenty-four. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to approve the preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for Wiley Street. Motion carried three zero. Item five, review the condition of West River View Expressway between Chase Street and West Grand Ave and consider repair work in twenty twenty-three, given the this segment is a connecting highways segment regulated by the D O T. A presentation was given by the city engineer regarding the current condition, background, and options available to the city to assist in taking action. All attendees spoke on the pros and cons of each of the options and the difficult nature of the decision. A motion was made by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to include the pavement replacement cost of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-three budget. Motion carried with Austin voting in the negative. Item six, review referral list. Referral list was reviewed and updated. Item seven, set the next meeting date, which was set for Thursday, November third at five P M. And item eight was adjournment, motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to adjourn at six oh nine P M. And with that, I submit the public works report for council approval.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bemke?
Could we hold out item number five, please?
Okay. As for the balance of the report, what are your wishes? Well, we have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Any further questions or discussion on the balance? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. Mr. Bemke?
So I think we had a pretty lengthy discussion on this last night. I'm not sure that we even have to take this action tonight, but I think it was decided in the in the meeting last night that this this was not to go forward. So I guess my question is, is probably of Sue, do we have to hold this out? It being that we did take action on it last night.
So it is already held out.
Right. I mean, I guess, was it the intent of the council that you were you would be marking up the budget through the committee of the whole process versus Public Works Committee or just the finance committee? I mean, is that? And then by making motions and then eventually getting to a product that would go to the council?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
So, right, so I guess this action by Public Works, I mean, it's in like so this is inconsistent with what Committee of the Whole did last night, then?
Correct.
Right. So I guess someone could hold it out and then you can, I guess, just vote it down and or yeah, I I guess just to dispose of it, you could deny it or.
So it's been held out already?
Right.
So just needed a affirmative motion and then?
Right.
Have your have a discussion if need be and then vote?
You're right. Yeah, that's fine.
So a motion by Delaney?
Motion to dispose of it?
To probably the motion needs to be an affirmative, so it's motion to approve the item as presented?
I.
Then you can vote.
Oh, okay.
Hold on. Is that? Okay.
Motions are usually in the affirmative, so even though you're going to vote no, you're going to make a motion to approve it and then everybody can vote no to that and it will deny.
Or yes, if you want.
Or yes, if you want. Yeah.
All right.
Makes sense? I was going to say you could make a motion that the the finance, the process that's been determined by the council was to do these things through Committee of the Whole, so it's motion to, you know, defer this to Committee of the Whole or something like that, I guess. Might be cleaner rather than.
Is that?
Uh, yes, I will change it to that, yes.
To defer to Committee of the Whole?
It's the same thing as.
Yeah.
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 Thanks.
And I'll leave my second.
Okay, and then you have a question?
Did we have anything regarding the the two hundred thousand that was?
So that's currently in the Committee of the Whole minutes? And it is in there? I just sent them to the clerk a little while ago.
Okay. Those minutes are not included in this packet because they'll be reported next council meeting?
I just didn't know if it needed to be, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Had to be sent in there. Okay, so can you reiterate how not how to vote, but what we are vote, how we are, what what what?
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, with the a and a no. Yay would be to defer to this common Committee of the Whole.
The motion would be that the the since the council has decided to do the the budgeting, basically markup through the Committee of the Whole, that then this matter will be deferred to the Committee of the Whole or to Committee of the Whole action?
So yes, yep.
If you want it to be deferred, right, to Committee of the Whole.
Now, Mr. Reo?
Well, I apologize for missing the meeting last night, but so I just want to make clear in my own mind, so because I wanted to vote no on what's in the minutes that we have of the report, but so what? It's actually going to, so the Committee of the Whole is going to?
Yeah, so last.
Take this up?
Yeah, so technically, last night at the budget meeting under the streets and the engineering budget, the committee voted to remove that project from the budget. Then they turned around and voted to add a to add back in two hundred thousand dollars for the concrete maintenance portion that was included in there. But that two hundred thousand is a normal budgetary item that's used to maintain the concrete on the connecting highways. And so that was voted to be put back into the budget. Clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
So, yeah, they won't, so the actual project of that section between Chase and West Grand was removed from the budget.
Was removed?
Was removed, or at least. As of now, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, it's still got to go to common council for approval in the minutes, but as of now, it's been removed by a majority of the Committee of the Whole.
So vote in favor will be?
To the Committee of the Whole. Dennis, good?
He was saying a yes vote goes to the Committee of the Whole.
Yeah.
That was my intention.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Any other? Yes, Mr. Reo?
It's it's going to go back to the Committee of the Whole?
I think it's, the intent is that the Committee of the Whole is going to dispose of it as how they decide to dispose of it, which they've already made that decision.
Okay.
So technically, I don't think there's any additional discussion unless it's brought up at the next council meeting in the Committee of the Whole report, which it could be at that point held out and re discussed and re-voted on if that ends up the council changing their mind. We good? All right. Please cast your ballots. Uh, Matt?
Um, I kind of missed some of this, Shane. Can you, uh?
Yeah, so.
Was this? I heard some.
I'm sorry. No, I was going to say, so an I, an a vote or a yes vote would send us back to Committee of the Whole as in the action that was done last night, basically? Or a no vote is no, you want to keep it in? I guess, keep it alive in the public works? Can I answer your question or you?
Yeah. Yeah, um.
Do you have a question?
Abstain.
You're abstaining? Okay.
Yeah.
So that motion carried six a's, one nay, and one abstention. And we are on to item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held October eleventh. Mr. Bemke? I got to find it in here, just. It's here somewhere, I'm sure. Uh, the Human Resource Committee met in the First World Conference Room on Tuesday, October eleventh. All committee members were present. A list of others who was in attendance are in file in the clerk's office. Item number one, the meeting was called to order at two P M. Item number two, there was an H R update, A, a recruitment update, B, a flu clinic update, and C, an open enrollment, open enrollment update. Discussion and updates were given and no action was taken. Item three, consider for proposals for the continuation of onsite fitness and physical therapy services, the preparation of job function descriptions, and the annual occupational fitness job function testing for police and fire department employees. Presentation was given by Tracy Taftner from Advanced Physical Therapy and Sports Medicine. Item four, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section one nine eight five one E Wisconsin Stats, which reads deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting of other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. There was a motion by Reo, seconded by Delaney, to move into closed session. A rule call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three to zero. In closed session? In closed session, the committee discussed the proposals presented in three items. There was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Reo, to rec-staff to negotiate with a proposer under the negotiation parameters outlined in the closed session. In the event the parameters are met, this item may be held out for the Human Resources Report on the council agenda, and the council may then consider for approval of an agreement of these services. Motion carried three zero. The committee may adjourn in closed session or may return in open session. Motion by Reo, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. The meeting adjourned in closed session at three forty-five P M. Thank you. Thank you. We should probably hold out item four and send that to the end of the council.
And three?
And we need item three held out? It's all, okay. Three and four are being held out for the end of the meeting. And what is your request on the balance? There we go, Mr. Delaney. Ms. Evanson held out three and four, but it's going to the end of the council meeting.
Oh, even on speaker.
And then Mr. Bemke seconded. Is there any further discussion on the balance of the report? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Zachar?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight a's and zero nays, and three and four will be held out at the end of the or in the near the end of the council agenda. Legislative Committee meeting held on October thirteenth. Mr. Bemke?
Again, thank you. Legislative Committee met Thursday, October thirteenth at four P M. in the council chambers, City Hall. All members were present. Present. A list of others in attendance will be on file in the clerk's office. Item number one, called to order. Chairperson Bemke called the meeting to order at four P M. Item two, consider for adoption the repeal and recreation of chapter thirty-one of the municipal code entitled Historic Preservation to amend provisions so that the city may become a certified local government to access historic preservation resources. There's a motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to approve the ordinance as presented. Motion carried three to zero. Item three, discuss the rules of the common council specifically relating to the use of video conferencing for standing committee, common council, and other committee meetings. There was a motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to make the revisions as discussed to the proposal presented and refer the ordinance and proposed rules to the council. Motion carried three zero. Item four, discuss increasing the number of alderprisoners of the city to nine by adding one at-large member. There was a discussion and no action taken. Motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. The meeting adjourned at five oh four P M. And with that, I'll submit the legislative report.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
I'd like to hold out two.
Holding out item two. We have a motion by Mr. Austin. Ms. Evanson?
I would just like a little clarification on three. I know I I watched the meeting, but I was just kind of curious, why does there have to be an ordinance at all? I guess, I mean, because what, reading through it, it says, you know, at least twenty-four hours or or upon the mayor or, you know, upon twenty-four hours or in case there's emergency. I mean, to me, I guess legally, why why do we need an ordinance? Thank you.
I think we've been advised, I know through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, I know the the towns association, I think everyone is pretty much advising their membership that if they are going to continue with any type of recognizing a meeting other than, you know, someone to participate in a meeting other than actually being physically present, that that should be in an ordinance, not just a rule or something. It should actually be in an ordinance that's been approved by the body in order to allow that to happen. So that's that's why I've put it in an ordinance form. Some, I agree, some of the the other collateral things regarding staff would probably not have have to be, but but mainly to recognize that attendance does not have to mean necessarily physical appearance, but it could be remote. That is should be in an ordinance.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to approve the balance of the report and a second by Bemke. Mr. Reo? All right, we have a motion to approve the balance of the report, and a second by Bemke. Mr. Reom?
Yeah, I just have, uh, comments, questions, whatever, I guess, on the, attending remotely or by telephone or whatever. And I guess, um, with that, that I can re, obviously it wasn't in the, in the ordinance, but, uh, a few years back, when I was, uh, attending by Zoom, I, uh, was criticized in, uh, that it didn't have my picture on the screen, so they really didn't know if it was me or not. And so, I wonder why that, uh, is not there, that somehow that we know who really the people are on the other end? As long as that was slapped on me a few years back by a former council member. So I just wonder why it's not in there, that somebody appearing remotely does not have to be that, we can see who that is. And with that, uh, Your Honor, I'm gonna hold this item out.
Everyone good with holding that item out? Sounds good. So we have items three and, oh yeah, two and three. All right, uh, the balance of the report, which is call to order and the alderman discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Um, Mr. Zacher is no longer with us. So that motion carried seven As, zero Nays. I just kinda noticed it. It's within the last five minutes. Hi, Mr. Lee.
All right, item two concerning the, uh, creation of a commission and the historic preservation. In my opinion, well, one, I'm not 100% sold on the historic preservation part of it, but two, to create a commission, whenever we create a commission, we give them responsibilities that are a lot of times out of our hands. And I think that if, it's something that the, uh, council wants to pursue, that it should not have a separate commission for it. It could have a committee, or it could just come before council. The first time that we'd heard about this was last month at the common council, and then it went to the legislative committee. And in my opinion, it seems like it is kinda fast for me, to be creating a, a commission within four weeks. So, um, I'm, like I said, I have read some articles about the cons of having the historical preservation. And like I said, I'm not sold on, I'm not saying that I'm against that part of it, but I don't think that we should be creating a commission for this. So my vote's gonna be no on this.
Thank you. As for item three, what is the council's wishes? I'm sorry, that's item two. Do you have anything you wanna add, Kyle, or you wanna vote on the ordinance, send it back? So a motion by Mr. Austin to approve the ordinance? And we have a second by Mr. Bemke. Kyle, did you?
You know, uh, I don't have much. It's, it's pretty straightforward in terms of the amendments to chapter 31. The conversation that we had at legislative and the presentation that was provided last month. You know, I, I guess stressing that there are several other communities that have historic preservation commissions. Depending on how they're structured and how they're identified in the ordinance in terms of their powers and duties, they can meet very, uh, frequently in terms of monthly or very infrequently. Given we're not looking to designate anything locally, I can see the commission meeting very infrequently, meaning that I think their role will be primarily to approve, you know, applying for CLG grants to adopt or create, uh, or hire a consultant and, and apply, uh, that consultant to do an intensive survey, as well as to, um, again, pursue nomination for historic districts. So I think those would be some of the things that they would be acting on initially. And if their powers and duties never expand and we don't adopt local districts, I don't think they would meet very frequently after that.
Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Is there a reason that you decided to put in a commission instead of just having it come to the council?
It's a requirement to be a CLG community through the state. If we wanna become a certified local government and pursue these resources, we have to have some local body. Uh, and most of the time, there's a commission, and council ultimately has the, the final say, very similar to any other committee or commission structure in government. It's a recommending body for the most part.
Do they have any other authorities given?
So if, yeah, if there were, if there were locally designated districts, they would have the authority to approve certificates of appropriateness, meaning that if, if something's locally designated, which is not our, our intent to do, they would have to then go through Historic Preservation Commission to get approval for whatever they're doing. If they're replacing their siding, then they, they would have the authority to approve or deny those requests. But again, it's not our intent to designate anything local. Everything that we're interested in is to pursue, uh, national registered districts and get these properties on the national register so they can access tax credits for their home improvement projects.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Evanson?
Thank you. Um, Dixman on that, Kyle. I know under 31.05, it says the, the common council shall have the power, um, subject to 3104, to locally designate historic structures, historic districts, and historic sites within, um, upon the recommendation of the historic preservation designation. So the common council would, I mean, act on their advice. As well as, um, 3105G, should the Historic Preservation Commission fail to issue a certificate of approshen, the third, a decision to the common council within 30 days, um, there is an appeal process, and it talks about the majority vote. So it is something that we still have control over, correct?
Yes. So there are, um, I guess, safety nets, uh, that give the council the ultimate authority. So if they, if, if the historic preserv, if there's a local district and if the certificate of appropriateness was denied, they could appeal to council. Council could overturn that decision and grant them whatever improvement that they want.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried six As and one Nay. Item number three. Thank you. Mr. Reom?
Well, I held it out. I'm gonna vote no, uh, but, uh, somebody's gonna make a motion, I think, to, to approve it, so would be my guess.
Mr. Bemke?
Um, I wonder if Tyler'd like to come up and maybe address this a little bit, and I guess I don't understand, Tom, it's, if we're, if I understand this correctly, the way we're gonna do this, you're gonna have to call in and get a Zoom number. So that's gonna verify, in my mind, that's gonna verify that it's a council member or staff person. So, and maybe Tyler can address that and clarify some of that.
Yeah, so I don't know, um, how the, um, video came to pass. I think it was under the mayor's powers for COVID at the time. I'm not 100% certain. Um, it was just easier to have a meeting to organize, um, and see who was wanting to speak, 'cause we had multiple people appearing via Zoom during those times. Um, with one or two, I think it'll be a little bit easier. And also with, you know, with some of the public, um, you know, unless there's a public request, um, I feel that that's probably going to kinda fall off, you know, separating who's actually a part of the meeting and not. So we will know who's attending these meetings via Zoom instead of having it wide open. That was part of the, our, part of the, um, argument to have everyone on, on, on video as well, so. I don't know if that clears it up any for you, Tom, but I think that's, you know, a part of the decision-making process back then was, there's multiple people on Zoom. It's kinda hard to know when someone wants to talk, and then who's talking at the same time. That's probably where, where it came from. Um, so, yeah. Clear as mud?
Mr. Venemen?
So, um, regarding, regarding when we're on Zoom, on the other app, if somebody attends via Zoom to a meeting, on the other, um, forms of media, so they're watching it on Facebook, how, how does the first, how does Matt tonight show up on the Facebook?
Uh, so, you know, we used to kinda cut to that, to Zoom video for that, that purpose. Um, you know, at, at some point, we'd probably just have a static picture of each alderman if they are, uh, appearing via the Zoom, and if, if they don't have a, a video feed going up, so. Um, we do cut usually kind of to who's speaking on, on a Zoom feed, um, and show, you know, the name of the person at.
Okay, so right now, it would've been tonight, it would, for instance, it would've been his name.
Correct.
When he, okay, thank you.
What are your wishes? So a motion by Evanson? And a second by Venemen? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried six As, one Nay. Uh, we'll bring it back next month for another reading. We are on to item E, Committee of the Whole meeting, October 4th and October 10th. Mr. Venemen? They're pretty long ones.
Sorry.
It's all right, cut off card.
Yep, I've got them right here. Um, a meeting of the Committee of the Whole, uh, the Wisconsin Rapid Common Council was held at council chambers on Tuesday, October 4th at 5:00 PM. Um, all alders were present. Um, the mayor of, or the mayor, a list of other attendees can be found at clerk's office. Council President Venemen called the meeting to order at 5:03. There was discussion of the 2023 budget. The 23, 20, 2023 budget was discussed. No action was taken. Um, the meeting adjourned at 6:48. We had a second meeting, a meeting of the Committee of the Whole was held on, um, Tuesday, October 10th at 5:00 PM. Um, all alders were present, and a list of other attendees can be found at clerk's office. Council President Venemen called the meeting to order at, at 5:00 PM. The 2023 budget was discussed. No action was taken. Um, the meeting adjourned. Submit those for approval.
Probably since they're the same, if you wanna take them as one item? What are your wishes?
Yeah, I'll just put them as one. Yeah, I'll move to approve.
So a motion by Venemen?
Yeah. Gotta do it individually?
You broke it. Gotta love technology. It was easy with just that light board up there that we had. The only thing you had to worry about was light bulbs. So we have a motion by Venemen to approve both reports? Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Reom. Is there any further discussion? I will do a voice vote. Oh, Mr. Delaney?
I'm sorry, I just have, uh, one question, and it's not about this, but we're, uh, we're going back. Jennifer Gosick had said that Dennis had changed two of his votes from last week. Did she mean last month, last common council?
Last common council meeting, yeah. He didn't change them. When he voted, he.
He wanted to vote the one way.
He wanted to vote aye, and, and it showed up as Nay, 'cause he couldn't get his, the mouse wasn't working.
Yeah.
So it didn't change the overall vote. It didn't change the decision of council, but we were just making a note of that to correct it in the minutes.
Okay.
Does that make sense? But we're not gonna change his vote. He, he just wanted for the record. Yeah, we'll just put a note in the minutes. Yeah, that he wished to, but we're, it was too late to change the vote after it had been.
Okay, now when is the, um, okay, say I voted one way, what is the, uh, process? Like, I go home and I think, oh, man, I really do.
Yeah, well, generally, once the vote is announced, then your vote is locked in. But if you're saying, uh, if you want, you know, if you voted, voted to, uh, approve something, and you want it, or maybe not approve something, and you want it to reconsider, I mean, the only way to really, you can't change your vote, but you can possible, it's possible to bring back certain items to the council with a motion for, uh, reconsideration or a motion for rescission. Um, so either to rescind the vote if it was something affirmative, or to reconsider if it was something that was denied.
Okay, so it would just have to be voted on again.
Right. What you're doing is you would bring that motion, and then the whole body would have to determine whether, um, they, you know, they wanna even entertain the ability to, you know, to revisit the issue. And then if that is successful, then it's possible you could bring something back, you know, the item back.
Sounds good. Thank you.
That's weird. You can at least, the roll call part works, or the, the speaking part works. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the reports. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. We are on to item 10, which is reports of other committees, commission, and boards and department reports. Uh, what are your wishes? Yeah, we'll see if we can, uh, oh, I saw a motion up there. Ms. Evanson, did you, wanna speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to talk about the Park and Rec Commission, um, held October 10th. Um, I was, I know it's the commission, and we have, um, no power to determine, um, I was, I know it's the commission and we have no power to determine their, their budget per se yet. But I was just disappointed that the commission left the rates the same as last year. I know they were, discussion was held and there was a good discussion in there about, you know, finding the sweet slot because we don't want to raise them too high because the, the attendance was lower this year already. I know the weather didn't cooperate as much, but I was just surprised that I didn't see any formal numbers like when I was doing. So if we had 8,100 non-residents at $7, the same as what a resident is, even if we raised it to a dollar for a non-resident at 7,600 people, would still bring in 60,800. As it is now with the non-resident is 8,100 people, times seven is only, is bringing 56,700. So even if we raised it a dollar and we had 500 less people, we're still bringing in more money. Even if we had 1,000 people less, 7,100 people at $8 an hour or $8 a pass is 56,800. So it's $100 more by raising it one and losing 1,000 people. If we had the same amount as this year, the 8,100 people, times eight dollars, I mean, we could gain $8,000. So to me, it was a wash, a wash. I mean, if, even if we, if we lost people, we'd still be making the same. So I was just surprised that we wouldn't try to give the residents a little break. You know, they're paying the $7, have the non-residents $8, where we could have actually made 8,000. Now I know it's only $8,000 and people say, you know, that's pennies compared to that, but it's a start. It's something to show the residents that we already paying on their tax bills for the water park. They're paying the same as a non-resident, even if we raised it a dollar for the non-residents. I mean, we, we could make money. I mean, in an essence. So I was just surprised that that wasn't brought up at all. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
But the residential rate is $5 if you buy a pass.
Right, but you have to buy the five-day pass. But I'm just, if someone doesn't want to utilize five days, you know, I don't like how they're, you have to buy that in order to get a discount, so that's just.
So any other questions or comments on the reports? Uh, Mr. Austin? Is your microphone on?
Yes, wastewater, item three was the Beeren contract update and a deadline was set for the village of Beeren for September 16th and the city would proceed pending the village's payment. Is there any update to this at all?
We're having a closed session on.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, okay.
Yep. So hopefully your, your questions will be answered. What are your wishes on the balance or on the reports?
I'm sorry.
So we have a motion by Delaney, second by Venemen. Did you have a?
Sorry, I just had one quick question on the, the airport, the airport manager's report. And I know that was dated September and I don't know if they've met since. Regarding the fuel sales, I know with the project, you know, it was kind of, has, has that rectified itself as yet? Or is, could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so the, the fuel system is up and running. But we've been seeing some lower traffic than we did previous last year and we're not sure why.
Are the prices the same? I know we kind of kept them a little bit lower to try to get more.
So the prices are based on what they purchased the fuel for. And so there's, there's a percent markup on it and they will not, the prices don't change until the tanks are emptied because otherwise the airport would lose money. So they can only adjust prices when the tanks are filled. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, what are, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, zero N's. We are on to item 11, referrals to committees. Any referrals? Nope. So then we go on to item 12, regarding human resources. Item number three, the council may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, parent one, parent E, Wisconsin State statute, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the council may discuss negotiations and consider approval of a proposal for continuation of onsite fitness and physical therapies services, the preparation of job function description and annual occupational fitness, job function testing for the police and fire department employees. The council will return to open session and may take action on the approval of proposals regarding these services. What are your wishes? So we have a motion by Bemke, second by Venemen to go into closed session. So the motion is that, so please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, zero N's. I guess if you gentlemen want to wait in the hall, department heads can be excused. Except for Mr. Hartman. We have a motion by Bemke.
I'll make a motion to approve option three, which is for 10 hours with advanced physical therapy and sports medicine.
Good with that second? Or that second? Okay, thank you. So a motion is second. Oh yeah, what about the police and fire part?
Okay, a motion to contract with advanced physical therapy and sports medicine for onsite training, fitness and physical therapy services for employees of, of the city not to exceed approximately 10 hours per week for 2023 and to include occupational fitness and fitness for duty validation, annual testing for the police and fire departments as negotiated in their respective collective bargaining agreements to be budgeted through their departments.
We, is that good on the second? Okay, go ahead.
I would just like the motion to include what the hourly rate is, so people are aware of what we're paying. Thank you.
Is that something you want to include?
No.
Okay.
Well, I can. It's $120 an hour is the hourly rate.
You good with that second? So a motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's, one N. We're on to item 13, the council may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, parent one, parent E, Wisconsin statute, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of a public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the council may discuss negotiations and strategy regarding the wastewater service agreements with the village of Beeren. City council will return into open session. What are your wishes? So a motion by Austin? Second by Bemke to go into closed session. Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. I'm sorry, yeah, seven A's, zero N's. Uh, we're in closed session.